Congress 25, this is the City Council Work Session for the City of Miller Beach, Florida. So let's bring this meeting to order, and now let's rise for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the life of an innocent state in America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kay, could you please call the floor?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper.
Present.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Anders Willings.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
And City Attorney Tom Trask.
Nice. I appreciate everyone being here tonight. We'll just move right on over into item number one on tonight's agenda, which is a review recommendations from the Citizens Advisory Committee. City Manager Reifler, you're here.
Thank you, Mayor. So we brought the budget for review and recommendations to the Citizens Advisory Committee. The first day that we met was on July 23rd. We met three times, and after reviewing the budget, there was asked, made a suggestion that we add a little bit to the budget message and policies from the Citizens Advisory Section in the front. And some of the items that they wanted to cover for the message for this particular budget year was to talk a little bit about what we're seeing with the property values, and then also a paragraph that explains some increases in the personnel services that we experienced over the last, I'm just kidding. So if you go to the second page of the budget message, which is in the packet, we had the two paragraphs on the second page after the last of the bullet points. So I don't know if you had a chance to read the full message, but the additional paragraphs are, "The city reaffirms its dedication to funding essential services to meet community needs, and particularly by residents, and by the City Council of Miller Beach, experienced a marginal decline in total taxable value, decreasing by 0.82% from the previous year." This reduction will proportionally decrease the ad valorem revenue to the city in fiscal year 2026. Palos County Property Appraiser anticipates a further decline in the city's taxable value next year, with an optimistic outlook that overall Palos County property values will stabilize and recover within two to three years. And that's based on what he observed with the hurricane in Fort Myers district. So, second paragraph says, "Fiscal year 2024 had notable increases in employee wages as the City Council directed staff to benchmark the city's pay scales against comparable jurisdictions, both locally and statewide. This process highlighted opportunities to adjust compensation ranges to ensure competitiveness. The emphasis on retaining skilled, well-trained personnel underscored the decision to increase personnel expenditures. With employee compensation aligned with market standards, future personnel costs are projected to grow at an annual rate of approximately 5%, consistent with the merit-based evaluation program." So those are the two paragraphs we added at the request of the Citizens Advisory Committee. So that was one of the recommendations that they would like for the council.
It's well-written. Would like to add, I like that it's well-written.
I would probably just add at the very beginning of those two paragraphs, say, "Attention Doge." Just throw it out there. Being serious, though, yeah, it makes sense. It thoroughly justifies what we've done. Yeah. Counsel, any comments?
Good.
Okay, and then after that, we did this exercise in 2022 to 2023, prior to us doing our bond issue. This is our five-year projections. It was put together by Heather LaRogelli, and she's going to take over from here and explain how she put this together so we can all understand each of the four of the city's funds and how the money will go around in the next fiscal year for planning purposes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to come tonight. Of course, I'd like to thank the Citizens Advisory Committee. They helped a lot. I appreciate their input very, very much. So what we have tonight is, it's a very preliminary projection. And I say that because all of these projects that we'll get to in a little while that's on this big sheet, they haven't been incorporated in here, actually, because we didn't know the timing of what the council intended is going to be for when the project will occur. So essentially, this, what you're seeing here, the first page, it says, "Citywide Consolidated Fund Projections." That's the general fund, the capital projects fund, and the stormwater fund.
Can you help us, help me orient the page you're on for a little bit sometime here?
The first page that I'm talking about says, "City of Miller Beach, Citywide Consolidated Fund Projections." It has a graph that has purple and green.
Got it. Thank you.
So we do have four funds. I'm going to bring this a little closer. Can you hear me okay, Jody, Anders?
Yes. Very clear. Thank you.
So we do have four funds here. We haven't really talked about the marina much. It's an enterprise fund. It's sustaining itself at this time. There aren't huge projects coming up, especially in this upcoming fiscal year of '26 that we're really budgeting for at this point in time. So tonight's projections are more focused on the general fund, capital projects fund, and the stormwater fund. So this first page is those three funds all combined. The effects of the subsequent pages, what they do, all combined, rolled in together for the government-wide financial savings. I thought it was important to include the assumptions that we used. So on each one of the funds, they have the individual assumptions, and we'll go over those. But just to get started, I want you to know, and it's important to point out, that your city has earmarked a million dollars, excuse me, a million dollars for hurricane reserve. That hurricane reserve is not reflected anywhere on here. We're not touching it. We're not using it. We're leaving it. So...
Did you use any of it next year?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we spent that money, but we still have enough in our net assets that this is, these are still good numbers.
So it's still a million dollars in the assets?
Still a million dollars, yeah.
You still owe 500,000 from FEMA.
Oh, we're owed a lot more than that from FEMA. I'll get to that in a second.
Counsel, if you don't mind, let's let her do her presentation, and then we'll ask questions.
Well, that's all right. I don't mind. Okay, so that's the first line item on the assumptions that I used. The fund balance here does not include the hurricane reserve. So whatever you see here, plus a million dollars, keep that in mind. Based on the projections that we used and the assumptions that went into this, the general fund is going to need to kick in to help the stormwater fund and the capital projects fund accomplish the projects that they're going to want to do. The revenue and expenditures are included here because if it's a revenue, then incoming fund, it's an expense in the outgoing fund. So you'll see where the money comes into the capital projects fund, for example, and it's leaving the general fund. So those always have to balance. Those inter-fund transactions. So the first, your main operating fund is the general fund. That's the one, if you look at the blue graph, this is kind of like the summary page, and then the one behind it is the general fund. It has tiny little print. That was like my work paper that I used to develop these numbers, and I wanted to include that so that you could see exactly if you change one thing, how it would change everything else. I thought it was important so that you guys could see, you know, if you increase your capital projects, or if you decrease the revenue projections, all of those components are included here, so you could see that if you really wanted to dig in. So here on the general fund, we have, to answer your question, Mr. Bankard, we have budgeted FEMA reimbursements in '25 and '26. So '25, we're almost finished. The end of our fiscal year is the end of next month, September 30th. When we look on our FEMA portal, we can see that there's quite a bit of money that's considered obligated. So they have approved it, essentially, but they're holding on to that money. The most recent communication that we've gotten has said that, I believe, the federal program is called Defend the Spend?
Defend the Spend.
Defend the Spend. So they're not giving all that money as promptly as we would hope that they would. So far, we have received reimbursement of $368,000, almost $369,000 this year, but we have another $646,000 that we're hoping to get. I split that between '25, which is, you know, like I said, almost over, and the amount that I have in the projected revenue for '25 that we're crossing our fingers we get is what is showing in our portal as obligated. So as of the last time we checked, it was $1,015,733. So the remainder of the FEMA money, I pushed forward into next year's budget into '26. So that's only almost $36,000. So for all the years here, I used an increase of 2% in revenue, a 5% increase in personnel costs, because that's what we've budgeted, you know, for the increase in staff. That also encompasses any increase in the related payroll taxes, insurance, retirement contributions. It's just a flat 5% that we use for that. We also use 5% for the other operating expenditures. And then this next bullet point is important, that I want to point out that I did this in all of the funds. And this is the point that I was trying to make earlier, that this is a very preliminary projection, because I've only budgeted the annual savings for the upcoming capital projects. So in our real full budget document, I don't know if you can picture this page, we have one of these pages for all of the funds, and it lays out all of our capital projects. And we show the amount that we've saved up from prior years, because we do have a savings account for each one of these projects. We put a little bit in each year until it's time for that project to be done. And that's, at the point that I did these projections, that's the information that I have. I didn't know the timing of the bridge. I didn't know when you want to install an air conditioner, things like that. So that's all I have in those out years for the capital projects. With that being said, I think that you could look at these projections as a foundation of what you have available. You have this much available to tackle these large projects that you have slated that we'll talk about here in a little bit. The next bullet point, we have no new debt planned in the general fund. And then again, the last two bullet points repeat that the general fund is going to need to supplement the stormwater and the capital projects funds. So the page that I have behind, that again is the tiny little one, it says, "General Fund Projections," and it has each line item broken out here if you wanted to see. So we have personnel, operating, capital projects, debt service, which there isn't in, and the general fund. And then in each year here, we have inter-fund transfers out. So that's what I was saying, it's an expense to the general fund, and it's revenue into the incoming funds. That's necessary because the stormwater fund and the capital projects fund are, they don't have enough money to pay for these projects. You have enough money in total in the general fund, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I just want you to keep that in mind. A couple of things I want to mention on these projections. In years past, I would say that a 2% increase in revenue is very conservative, however. In the current political climate...
Ooh, did that?
Just a little blocked, still. That's all.
Sorry, guys.
I'm sure you've all heard, in the current political climate, they're talking a lot about property taxes and doing away with them entirely. So that, in conjunction with the fact that you've just been hit by a bad hurricane, and your property values have, as we just had it to the budget message, they have gone down. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's a good projection or not. You know, this is all speculation, not only the ad valorem taxes, but there are a lot of other revenue sources that you have in your general fund that can fluctuate. You know, when you guys had to shut down the parking lot because they were staging for the heat drainage, we didn't make any money on parking during that time. So there's a lot of things that can affect these numbers. So a 2% group, I think, is still conservative, but we can't also hang our hats on that either. So I do think that the 5% increase in the expenses is still conservative. That's what we've historically done for the staff increases, and like I said, the related costs that go along with that. So going forward to the capital projects fund, that's going to be the chart that's in green. I don't have any increase in the annual revenue in this fund or the stormwater fund. And the reason for that is, in the capital projects fund, the main source of revenue in there is your penny money. I don't know what's going to happen with the penny money, so we held that steady. As you spend down the money that's in that fund, you have less money in the bank, so there's less money to make interest income off of. So we held the revenue steady in all the years. You'll see on here, there's some activity in '25 and '26 having to do with the Gulf Boulevard reimbursement. We are still entitled to $930,425 from the county. That project seems to have been stalled, so we budgeted that in '25. It's not going to be complete this month.
No. The program being a whole other year took quite a period.
They did. Yeah, the county extended that because there have been a lot of communities that have not been able to accomplish the underwriting project that they wanted to, so the county was nice enough to extend that timeframe. So originally, we had budgeted that project and the reimbursement in '25. We're taking it out. We have to rebudget that again in '26 and cross our fingers that that happens. We have debt service in the capital projects fund. The very last page of your packet before the big project sheet is the debt service schedule, if anybody was interested to see how soon all that, those different items of debt retire, that's on there. There was a point in time that we were contemplating potentially paying off the debt early. In our discussions, me and Kyle and the Citizens Advisory decided that that's not really beneficial. The interest that we would earn...
Ron.
Oh, Ron's going to talk about that? Oh, okay. That's okay. I'd love for you to talk, Ron. So we decided that wasn't really beneficial, so I'll just move, I'll leave it at that. And then you'll see where, just based on the out years of the savings accounts, if you can call it that, that there is inter-fund transfers coming on this schedule. They don't start until '29, which we need to keep in mind, that as you start to spend money on these big projects, the general fund will need to kick in sooner than that, in all likelihood. The capital projects fund is, I continued in this projection and the roll forward, I made sure that there was enough of an influx, this is the same with the stormwater, there's enough of an influx of money to cover the next year's projected expenses. I don't want it to go broke and then have to move money in an emergency situation. So here, when I was making the projections, I wanted to pre-fund the next year's expenditures. That's good. And then the last section that I have here is the stormwater. Again, I did not increase the projected annual revenue. We do allocate 15% of the Public Works Department salaries and related benefits to the stormwater fund. So whatever our public works salaries and all personnel costs are, normally that would be a ton according to the general fund, but we pull out 15% and we charge it to the stormwater fund. So that went up 5%, and then also the operating expenditures also increased to 5%. We haven't slated any new debt in the stormwater fund, and as I mentioned, the general fund's going to need to supplement the stormwater fund expenses. I will mention that between the time I gave you the last draft of the budget, I grew July 21st meeting, and I did these projections, the pump project had been included in these projections. So you didn't have, you haven't had a budget, a full budget with that in it, but these projections do consider $660,000 being expended in 2026 for that pump project. So there's going to be a big discussion when I get done yapping here, what the priority projects are going to be. We're going to need your guys' insight on this, and time is of the essence for my purposes so that I can update the '26 budget. I need to post it on the website by this week, and you have your first public hearing next week. So you have a lot of projects in the upcoming years, but my focus, and my focus, and Kyle might feel differently, I need to know what you want to do next year in '26, so that I can make a budget document that's ready for print.
So you got to go over your timeline. You, so you basically have this to be prepared for your first draft.
I do. So the budget document, I'm looking at it here, the last copy I gave you is 80 pages. So when you make a change, it changes a lot. And I'm happy to do it, but I need to, I need to know what of these projects you'd likely That is the big paper at the end of your schedule here. And before we start that, if there was anything from the Citizens Advisory that would like to be mentioned, we'd love to hear it.
Roger. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For basing her. Counsel, once again, I'm Lieutenant Manato, Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Thanks, Heather and Kyle, for all your help. We flew through a great review of the budget, as Kyle mentioned, and then we dug into this project, looking at the capital balances, the balances. And part of the thought is, as mentioned, is there an opportunity to pre-basin the debt down the road, but looking at the capital projects? The good news is, is when we did the loan back in 2023, our interest rate's 4.36%, and we're at about 4.4% at the SBA right now. So basically, our cash base for the debt, and we were looking at potentially in a 2030 scenario, so we're going to have about a $760,000 early payoff. With the new capital projects, we just felt that it's best not to recommend a future paydown of debt, because we are getting the same interest earnings today. Now, if the Federal Reserve reduces interest rates, there's a good chance that the SBA, at the state of the world, you know, that 4.4% early today will come down. But overall, there's, I think the main message that we want to make sure we reiterate is that the city is well-funded, there's strong balance sheet, strong cash reserves. As Heather mentioned, the million dollars, which we pretty much spent in our hurricane reserve this year, in comparison with Irma, we spent about $250,000. So we spent four times more, closer to the direct head. It is a city, I forget, it's not a, it's an ordinance that we retain a million-dollar balance, and then it's another ordinance regulation, we've set up a 20% cash reserve. So we more than exceed our cash reserve, 20% of expenses, so call that about $800,000. So we've got plenty of reserves. And then we've dug into the project that you guys will be jumping into now, Kyle, in prioritizing the capital projects. And there's some projects that are coming up, not knowing what the exact spending will be. The good news is, is we have reserves to dump on them. But I think this is a great exercise, and Kyle took the initiative and the thought process to, let's have a strategy around what our capital expenditure needs are going to be, and knowing that, before the air conditioning, this building, the building's 20 years old. Good news is, last payment's coming up, so this will be a debt-free building here next month. And I think it is very prioritizing at Kyle, and so I think that this is a great exercise. We're happy to be a part of it and to help, and if there's any questions, I'll be taken.
Counsel, any questions for Ron?
Thank you.
Just wondering, we have that million-dollar hurricane fund, and we've had that for years. What's the interest rate we're pulling on that?
So it's not invested separately. So we make, like he said, about 4.4% on the money that's in...
Total?
Yes.
So that's just, even though it's a separate account, we don't have it in the separate...
We just consider it separately. It's not, it's not separated anywhere. It's just co-mingled with our...
It's co-mingled.
Yep.
And that interest rate rolls back into the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the interest rate, we're getting 4.4%?
4.4% is what the state is paying. Most of the cash is invested through the state SBA program.
Okay. Yes, Jim?
Did I understand it correctly that all of the projects listed on this sheet are included in the budget?
No.
They are not.
They are not?
They're incorporated into...
None of them are, or which of them are?
Well, so what we do each year, like I said, we have a savings plan for each one of them. So like the very first thing, the 22nd Street Bridge Repair. We've been saving up money every year, our annual funding for that particular one, just since it's the very first line item. We have been saving for repairs to that, $10,000 a year, and then for, in case we need to replace it, we've been putting away $30,000 a year. So we have quite a bit of our net assets, what it's called, like our money has been saving up with the intent that we're going to have to spend it on that at some point in time.
What's the cost of that bridge repair?
Well, we're hoping that the council's going to approve for us to put 500,000 in the budget for that bridge. Of course, you know, Kyle can speak more intelligently than me on this, but we don't know for certain how much it's going to cost, but we think that 500,000 is a good estimate to start with.
Would you, are you allocating for repair and replacement at the same time?
Yeah, we do. We have two separate programs, ones for repair...
No, I'm saying they're both allocated for '26. Are you replacing the bridge or repairing the bridge in '26?
We had, we had some savings built up in the repair, and some savings built up for replacement, but we were going to combine the two that are allocated as far as...
So we're ultimately just replacing the bridge, but not repairing the bridge and then replacing?
No, no, no. We're not going to repair it.
Good job.
No, definitely not.
We're in the process of finding out what's going to be involved in the bridge repair. My update from Gemini, so we have a plan of action that was issued by the FDOT, and they are the, they're, I mean, the Federal Highway Administration Regulations, and they gave us a notice that issued, designated as scouring critical, and it outlines the conditions and countermeasures that they needed for what it could possibly, the significance of the scouring that we may have. But we don't know what significance that is. So the last full scout, full scour analysis formed in 2013 by FDOT, and the latest notice suggested that we, they're suggesting that we've experienced seven feet in addition to the scouring, but we do not know that. But with this, with this finding that they put on us, the bridge is scouring critical, it could have up to 7.1 feet of scouring since 2013. There's been some deterioration of the bees, the abutments, the piles. Every two years, we have been replacing and patching over some of this replacement, and where the concrete is swelling, we've been patching it. So the FDOT recommends scouring countermeasures such as articulated in the concrete block, such as articulated concrete block or brick we have found on the estimate. So then, so what the next step is going to be is, we need to do a non-destructive testing to the piles to find out the extent of the scouring we're going with. And right now, we are talking to a company in Orlando that does these measurements, and they use, I believe, sonic measurement to tell about how much of the dent that you still have left with the piers. So right now, cost speculation for this study is about $25,000 to $50,000. But that is the next step. If it's over $25,000, then we'll have to go through the dent process to get this, this service done for us, but that will tell us the information we do need to continue with the repairs. In best-case scenario, the scour is less than what they're anticipating. We hope for that, but it could be just as bad as they said, and it could be some major repairs. So, you know, when we look at this capital expenditure, just ranking I put together, you know, we want to anticipate that we're going to have a significant cost to repair the 22nd Street Bridge, if not, what I would consider a more major cost, like awards of $400, $500. $400,000 to $500,000, which could be a major overhaul to the bridge. If the scouring is that bad, but we have to find that out first. So, but I would like to cover this capital projects ranking we put together. The original one was done by the former Vice Mayor, Acton Gunn. And I took that and kind of took it to where we are today and tried to consolidate it and make sense in my own mind of how our, how our funds work and how these, I would categorize these different projects into groups and rank them. So if we start on the far left, you know, your first column is just identified by the column, the numbers to make it easy to track. But then I try to list out each project's fund. We have four funds. We have the general fund, capital fund, stormwater fund, and marina fund. And that, that's critical in understanding the budget. So I started by, you know, color coding that and listing out these funds so you can reference that. And then when I looked at all the projects, and looking at the capital projects, the general projects, some fall under stormwaters, some fall under capital projects, some fall under the general fund, and then the other marina. But when I, when I looked at all these, we have a lot that fall under infrastructure category, and that's mainly our capital projects. But within that infrastructure, some of them are larger replacements, but we also have the programs that would do this to yearly repairs. So since, you know, causeway lights, the Harrison Avenue Bridge repairs and the 22nd Street Bridge repairs are more of annual as needed, I separated those out from the, from the other capital infrastructure projects. So then that left us with, what you'll see, the top is the yellow, which is, again, the annual repair projects. And then you'll have the red, which is our capital infrastructure project. And then the green is more building and equipment replacement. So things that either we have like buoys out in the Gulf, we got mowers, we use some more in our parks regularly, or the things that we need to, such as the AC heater running, those all fall under this category. And there are savings to replace either an item, a piece of equipment, a vehicle, or you know, some element of the building that needs a major overhaul. So you have these two main groups. The outlier is going to be your repair programs. And then at the very bottom, I have the marina, the one project we have in there. I separated that out because the marina, as you know, is an enterprise fund. It's more of a business. This is kind of, as things break, we need to repair. So that's, that's really the primary ranking, treat me a different way. So if you look at all your capital infrastructure, which would be in the pinkish red, and then all your green, which is going to be your replacement for equipment building, I went down to the, it's the seventh column over, and you'll see staff rank. So from there, once I got them grouped out where I thought they were in like, for like categories, I tried to rank them in the order of importance, that if we had to, what would have to come first before another. And my reasoning was pretty straightforward. You know, you'll see at the very top, we do the 22nd Street Bridge, followed by the Harrison Avenue Bridge. And I have those before street resurfacing. The reason, obviously, is the bridge, we need the bridge to travel, the people in the bridge to that. You know, it's a, it's a must that we come before the condition of the roads, or even like the drainage in the roads. So I think maintaining access to all of our islands is first and foremost, and followed by street resurfacing. I put that up there because to me, it's a, it's a, it's an element of the city that needs to be kept up and is very important. Again, roads and infrastructure, and it's, it's something that we already have, it's a asset that is in place, it needs to be replaced, it kept up for the city's use. So I have the street listed as number two. And for each of these, I tried to spread out for a one to five specter. So I only have some ones all the way out to the top. It doesn't minimize any of the lower ranked, it's just that's where they fall in order. And then followed after streets, and I have the seawall replacement. And then we have the 9th Street Pump Project as a number two. And then Place Valley Curves is number three, and then follow the city materials lights, and develop all of our purification program. The reason I have that at the bottom is because that is the money that is part of a program given to us, that if we do the project that they allocated the money for, then we can get that reimbursed. But it may not be necessarily something that we have planned regardless in the future. Or it also, like, for instance, the underground was a project that ended up costing us about a million more dollars than what was given back to us. So that's the reason why that program got placed at the bottom ranking. And then I did the same thing with the equipment. And then, self-explanatory, I thought that the equipment was a good exercise, but it really made me think of what we must have if we had to cut down or cut the budget. And when we talk about things like our head alarm reducing, our revenues reducing, you know, we would cut our costs in the operating, which I've kept pretty slim over the last three years. But the majority of where we would cut to save would be coming up with toilet, in my mind. So it would be reducing the equipment prices. But I kept that in order of importance. Obviously, the things to keep this building in operation are going to come before some of the outside stuff that we use in the parks. But there are, there is key equipment that I ranked, the things we would need most, which would be at least one ZMO or a large utility truck. And then moving down the list, it's kind of, I reasoned it out. So I don't, it may make sense to you and just looking at how I ranked it, if there's any question of my ones in front of the other, I'd be happy to explain it. I felt this exercise just kind of put everything in an order and helped me kind of prioritize what would be most important, you know, moving forward, if, again, we have to make cuts. The one section that is different is you're going to see the streets listed out, and I tried to incorporate the groups of streets that are left in our index that we have not repaved and did a pavement calculation for those groups. I kept them in location proximity. This is the original kind of layout of how I have these streets getting paved in the future, but they don't have to be paved in this group. But what I wanted to put, what I wanted to show is that if we were to pave this first group, that it's all this sooner 2028. I put 2028 because the calculations I have to resurface all that road is going to be about $275,000. So 2028, at our current $75,000 per year, would be that year that we'd have that money built up. Again, that's, this is just for planning purposes. If we had a road that was way worse, that we felt was even to be prioritized over every other, that could be segmented out of this group and afforded. I just wanted to make that clear. So this is just kind of my latest planning and how I laid it out. There's a lot of flexibility. It's kind of a lot I discovered. But just to cover some of the other columns, you know, your target year is when we expect to spend. You know, the bridge is the big one. That's why I highlighted it, because that's going to be a major expense this upcoming year. Some of these other ones, I put 2026 on the pump project. You know, we talked about putting in the budget. I want to mention that Gemini Engineering is putting in for a residing Florida grant, but through the FDIP for that project, so we will, to turn that into a reimbursement for the city.
Which, which project?
For the 9th Street.
Okay. Thank you.
And also.
The grant application we're putting in. We're going to do one for the bridge as well, for residing Florida.
Both bridges or just the 22nd Street?
Because Harrison is currently in good shape. We had them inspected about two months ago, and it came back. The last time it was repaired was in 2019, and it's held up well.
So you're saying they're good till 2050 now?
That's, that's just my best.
On the rise.
But that's just looking at the numbers. So as far as where, I put totally earmarked in 2026, so that's going to be the money that in the past budgets, we have saved every year, and that's how much we've built up in each of those projects. And then the funding beyond is just taking all those numbers that were in the out years plus something said 2030 and beyond, and combining all that. That much gave us our total product, productive cost for each project. And then I tried to incorporate the life cycles that we had on those project sheets to give an idea of, you know, what, how that project would cycle when we need to do again. And, I mean, there's some little nuances in between with some cells that I kind of split out, like for the roof project, I split out the difference between aluminum roof and the aluminum roof. You know, for the carpet, same thing, for one side of the building versus the other, because it doesn't necessarily need to get through the whole, the whole building a long time.
Mr. Reefer, before we, we go around the council and we make comments, I'd like to add my own comments, which are, as you all know, the governor is hell-bent on doing something with property tax reform. While at the Florida League of Cities, I saw a presentation from someone who was actually on one of the committees. And basically, they've been given five options. All five suffer. As far as the municipalities are concerned, they suffer. For the homeowner who hates paying taxes, it sounds pretty damn sweet. But in all reality, if they're not educated and they, that's a, that's a bad word to say. It's not, not that they're uneducated, it's that they're not educated on where taxes go and what they're used for, if they are for eliminating or even destroying the municipal level of municipal property taxes. Unfortunately, so whatever it is, it's going to be on the ballot in 2026. And they're still hashing out what that option is, but as Tom can probably testify to this, none of it smells very good for us. So as we're looking through this list, keep in mind that this may be one of the last one or two years where we're actually in control of our own budget. It's, currently, we, we control the mileage rate that applies to our community, and we determine how to spend it. As you all know, Doge is, Florida Doge is checking in to everything, and I think it all ties together. Everyone asks about what's the alternative? What, how do you offset this spending? Well, the only thing that I can come up with is that the state of Florida figures out another way to tax the homeowner, but maybe under a sales tax or something like that. And what that means is that the state of Florida now is the, the purveyor of taxes and revenues. And so little communities like Ballard Beach may very well be begging for a handout instead of being able to effectively and responsibly managing our own budget. We, it may just be dictated to us that these storm drain projects or fridge repairs, eh, that's not needed. Eh, air conditioner, you need to figure out your own source of revenue. Unfortunately, we're in a situation that's very unique. We're one of the last remaining communities in Florida that really has no other revenue except for what we got. And so I want everyone to be very mindful as we're going through these projects. You, you see anything that's absolutely not immediately necessary, and you think that we should actually kick it down the road until we know what our future holds for us, I highly recommend doing that. Ultimately, this council will have to reach a consensus on whatever we decide, but I'm sure there, there are many ways that we can tighten up our belts and, and, and prepare for the worst. Hopefully, it won't be the worst, and it won't go through, but I just have a feeling that whenever you're talking about property taxes, especially as much as I pay for property taxes, people that aren't in municipal government are just going to run, not walk, but run to the ballot box and vote for that. So that in mind, would anyone like to speak?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, let's start with you, Mr. Harrow.
I just want a question or clarification. So I look at the projection here, and I see an allocation of, looks like a million, I actually see, a million 316, 925 allocated to capital projects. So of that million 316, is that coming up into the sheet, or is that money to be allocated from the sheet?
Well, so that first, that very first year is 2025. That's our base year that we're in right now.
Okay, so there's a million 210.
Yep, a million 210. And that comes from the schedule here. So from the budget document that I had sent you, the current year budget. Which is a combination of, actually, most of these are just the savings plans, other than with the exception of rebudgeting the Gulf Boulevard Reification Project.
Got it.
So that's exactly where you can pick up that number.
Perfect, okay.
You want those papers?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good. That helps, that helps a lot.
I had an interpretive question also, if I may.
Sure.
Kyle, really appreciate how you prioritize things. I know that's a very difficult process, and it's a huge help that you did that. My question is, is there a break even point as far as if we went down the list and started doing our first priority projects and going through the levels of priorities, is there a point at which we can fund those and still be within budget?
Could you allocate all the priority ones and have budget left over? Or would category one consume all the budget?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's a very good question. All of it, when I initially saw this schedule that he prepared, I, without jumping down and we see, I thought that he was saying that he wanted to do all of these projects this year, which is not actually.
Correct.
What he's proposing. He's saying that the priority ones are more important than the priority twos, threes, fours, and fives. So like when we go down this list and everything that says 2026, that's when I was going to go into his office and say, what are you talking about? And he, to my understanding, we're not intending to do all of these projects in 2026. That's as soon as we could potentially do them if we had to, if that is the council's will. And we do have the money to cover them. As Ron said, you are very financially sound, but also, as the mayor said, we need to be very smart with our money. And I appreciate what you said, and I agree with you very much so. So before you guys go around and you tell what you want to be done, I'm going to tell you what I would like to be done. To echo what Kyle said, the 22nd Street Bridge, best case scenario, we can have it repaired. Worst case scenario, it's serious rebuilding type repairs. So I'd like to see that in there. We're okay with the amount that we've saved up to do the streetlights on Bay Shore and the buoys.
Where are you at?
Neither am I, no.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah. So the next one down the list was causeway lighting was your next one.
Yeah, give us numbers if you would.
Yeah, give us.
Line 14th is the buoys.
Line 14th is the buoys.
And the streetlights are 10.
Thank you.
That's just based on my conversations with Kyle. He knows your city, he knows what needs to be done. That's how he was able to create this comprehensive list and rank them. I put a lot of weight into his opinion, the same I put a lot of weight into your guys' opinion too. But all these other things like he, like he mentioned, you know, in the green section, maybe we don't need all that stuff right now. And again, repeat the mayor's point, we don't know how long we're going to have the discretion to do all of this. So everybody's got a chance to chime in. But again, I have to incorporate your wishes for this budget pretty lickety-split.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmembers Williams and Shirley, do you have any comments? I can't really tell if your hand is raised, or something red up there, but raise your hand if you'd like to speak. No?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Yellow hand.
I was looking for, I was looking for a hand to go at.
Yeah. Mayor, you were saying that, you know, there's a good chance we might not get this money next year. I mean, I'm sorry about the, that the, you know, this is going to want the ballot in 2026, about the way the municipal can get revenue. What happens to all the money that we have in general reserve if that weren't case? I mean, is, and I guess where I'm headed is, like, if user loses it, is that the potential mentality also? Is that the potential mentality also?
I would not think so because it was collected, uh, with, with a reason. Uh, but I would say that, uh, what would happen is they would go after future funds.
Right. Okay. So, okay, so you, what would you think? I mean, to me, that would tell me, if I'm understanding you correctly, that, you know, there could be some more incentive to use it because, I don't know. Oh, you're thinking that we would be able to belong to those funds and we would be able to do that?
Keep the reserves, yeah.
Or I get the impression that we wouldn't even have anything to do with it. It would just be handed back to the state and they would.
I think it becomes an allocation.
So it's, it didn't come from the state, it came from us and it's, it's our money.
So they would be forced to keep it in a place that only, like, uh?
I, I don't, I don't think that's the case, Kyle. I think that whatever funds we've collected over the past few years, they're ours and we would continue to use them the way that we, uh, they were intended. I think going forward in the future is where it's unpredictable and, uh, and very risky. Uh, so what we have now, we know we've got, but in the future, we don't know what we, what we're going to collect. Councilmember Shirley?
So when I'm looking at the capital projects funds, um, I, it's my opinion, we just hold all capital projects until we determine how the city will explore the funding, if they're gonna have, um, any adware taxes coming in or not, with each of the 22nd Street Bridge because we have to do that, um, as a condition of having the bridge in our city. We can't allow that to go down. But other than that, I'm not supportive of spending any money on capital projects at all.
Would that be a, if it's on the ballot in 26, it probably would not be in effect until 27, 28?
I don't know. Why not even get on the ballot?
Yeah.
I mean, this is just.
Jody, my, my, yeah, my only hesitation on that, Jody, is do we sit and wait for two years?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So I understand the concern about the possibility of our revenue decreasing in the future years, so I get that. Personally, I feel like, especially with certain capital projects, if we don't spend the money now that's allocated, allocated for certain projects, it may significantly increase three years down the road. And we may create some scenarios where it's, you know, not to be dramatic, but almost be catastrophic because we don't fix something or replace something when we need to, as opposed to an emergency scenario type of deal. Kyle, are any of our bridges under the, basically the control of the state? Because I know some bridges, if they exceed certain loads and certain distances, the state actually is involved.
That's what the 22nd, 22nd Street Bridge is because it's over 25 feet.
Okay.
The state is involved in inspections. I don't know the legal involvement beyond that, but it's probably something.
Okay.
That they have control.
But does that make, does that make sense, what I'm saying? You know, if we say, let's not spend any money and then things deteriorate because of that and then we wait two years or three years down the road and say, okay, now let's fix it. The additional cost due to damage or not maintaining it the way we may normally have is gonna cost us a lot more money. And to me, my gut feel was to really feel that pain, but then secondly, I thought, I think we should go ahead and fix everything that needs to be fixed. If we don't get money in the future years, we're gonna have to figure out some additional revenue anyway that the state consists us in. But I don't think we're really helping the city by just having money drawing interest as small as it may be and not doing things that we normally would have done. And then we say, okay, now, effectively, we may have lost a lot more money by putting it off. So that, that's my take on it. Um, we, and, you know, I sat in the same session that the mayor did and we heard the same words being used, there's five options and none of them are pretty. And I also agree with him, when people see that this is an opportunity to decrease your property taxes, most people without really thinking it through all the way, well, how's that gonna impact our town or our city, are gonna say, cool, we're gonna have less taxes, that's all good, until they realize that, well, the roads aren't gonna be as nice, the parks aren't gonna be as nice, different things that the city provides is not gonna be able to do that. So it's gonna be upon us to help educate everybody. Now, even if our city voted a hundred percent to not, uh, do the option or vote against it, whatever it might be, that's, that doesn't matter, I'm pretty sure it's a statewide deal. So everybody in our town can say, well, we're against this and it probably won't matter if the balance of the state is in favor, we're just a small part. But again, that's just my take on, on the projects. I don't, I don't think we're gaining anything by just, um, holding that money until we find out what the state does. I think we should still proceed with the projects that we think are gonna benefit our city. And if down the road it gets tough, then we just have to deal with it. But letting those projects cause problems for our city, I don't think is a good choice at this time.
Who else? Uh, councilmember Baker?
First of all, property taxes come to a boil. Floridians are gonna be bombarded with commercials on how these are gonna be eliminated and what you're gonna be paying in the future to subsidize the property taxes that you're paying now. So I'm not worried about any of this. She's not gonna do any more projects, capital projects, until this is hammered out. Let's just give her a bite back of her tax money. I mean, why collect it if we're not gonna use it? Um, there's projects here that need to be done. Um, I was just out this past Saturday, um, I was a hundred percent for this ninth street pump, but then when it did get put in, uh, during the reconstruction of Ninth Street, I got a phone call Saturday morning, coming to look at my street, Seventh Street, this is Seventh Street at 2:10 PM. This is Ninth Street at the same time, no water. We had the first, I got pictures for every street, first, First Street to the, uh, tree streets, all right? First Street was pretty much of a mess. Sixth Street was actually dropped and, um, and Fourth Street had, they were really great. I mean, I don't know what they did. But if you looked at the original plans, Gemini or Sign, whatever the, uh, engineering company was back when they did these jobs five years ago, and as we discussed this at the last meeting, they never repaired the pipes. The pipes are now leaking and if they would've just raised the pipes and some of these other streets, just raised that six inches, six inches, because this is, this is now at 2.8 feet. Ninth Street is now cleaned out, all right? Doesn't have any water. Seventh Street, which the, which the drop off is too low, okay? Doesn't start draining until 2.8 feet, okay? This is a total mess. Now, if they would've just raised that six inches in your street and by the other streets, we wouldn't probably even need check valves, yelling pumps. So this is all done completely wrong. And I was lied to by the former city manager when I first got on council, I bitched about this. I said, it's worse now than it was before the check valves were installed. And he said, oh, we would've had to go through a yard and raise the pipes and all like that. He gave me the impression, if new pipes are in, I didn't find out until the last couple of weeks, we put in, we left in 50-plus year old pipes that are now leaking. It's a total mess. And as some neighbors are saying, this is highly unacceptable. And it is highly unacceptable. I mean, this water has gone into this guy's driveway, uh, and this wasn't even a bad storm. I mean, this is only, this is only 1.8 inches of rain. And this is a total mess. And we're gonna just sit here and say, we're gonna spend $695,000 on Ninth Street, when Ninth Street is a, is a problem, but it's not the major problem in this city. And we ought to reconstruct, we ought to spend our money, as you would say, wisely, okay? And put this back on the plan. And if it takes a year, takes six months, takes two years, let's spend the $695,000 wisely instead of Ninth Street. Because I would not vote for this right now.
Frank, you may not be aware that there was a temporary pump on Ninth Street over that time. And so to me, that showed that the pump concept should work. There was a temporary pump there and it re-divorsted the water just as though under the project proposed it would do. So that was a huge help and the streets flooded today, so.
My street was flooded.
Yeah, so.
Seventh Street was worse, okay?
But I think.
Like I said, let's fix the streets. Everything from Fourteenth Street down needs to be fixed, maybe Sixteenth Street. But Ninth Street, just putting one pump in at Ninth Street is a foolish move, all right? When you should be discharging, this is stormwater, okay? It has to be lifted out and you can run, hey, I, I talked to MWI pumps and everything like that. You can lift this out with maybe a pump and a charging pump and get rid of everything.
Okay, so, Mr. Baker, would you mind summarizing what it is that you'd like to do with this budget in one short paragraph?
I think we should, we go forward with the projects, the capital projects, um, the 22nd Street Bridge. I don't wanna tax the people on 22nd Street to do their bridge like we were talking about with the pumps. Um, uh, I think we need to take the $695,000, whatever the cost is for Ninth Street and reexamine. That's a major, major cost.
All right, thank you very much. Kim, you, uh, you were speaking. Uh, what's, what are your recommendations?
I really feel like I need more information. I would like to see how far we can get down the priorities and still be within budget. I mean, it's, 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 it's a huge amount of work and a, and a lot of consternation to be able to provide these priorities. So I think that's a really good thing that has happened here. But how far will it take us instead of just nitpicking at each and every project?
And Kyle, this, this list right now, this is laid out within our budget, is that right?
These are all our current projects that I ranked in the order of importance. Now, um, in our current budget, we're planning on a major bridge repair, so that will be included in the 2026 budget as well as the last, we argued up for the pump station was to add that into the 26th.
Yes, but what I'm hearing is that you're saving a little bit for each one of these projects. Some of them are sooner than later and we've budget, have, it's in the budget currently. All of these items are in the budget and somewhere.
And somewhere in this area.
Okay, all right. So provided that nothing were to change and we were to continue moving forward with the way that we are now, eventually all of these would come up.
In the timeframe that is suggested here?
Not necessarily, no. Um, I get what you're saying, um, but I think that what you're asking is for me to tell you how fast you could do all of these projects and spend all of your money. Is that right?
I think it was like one through 10. What, what of the one through 10 can I accomplish with the money allocated?
Yeah, based on, based on exactly what's here. In this year, we do this and this year we do that. How far can we get down the line and still be in budget?
Well, but that's, I think that's the problem with, I think what you're, what you're wanting me to do, when you say in budget, do you mean 20% of your fund balance? Do you mean all of the money that you have? You know, the budget is subject to what we put in.
But that we don't exceed our revenue, shall we say?
Okay.
Or that we don't exceed our assets. We, that we're not deficit, deficit spending. We have reserves. We have, uh, programs to continue to fund reserves, but here we're gonna be spending down some of them as projected here over timelines that are already specified here. So how far along can we get and still not be in a deficit situation and still being adequately funded as a city?
Well, so based on the projected cost of these projects, the capital projects fund, we're, that's where we need to account for it because these are capital projects.
Right.
Um, the capital projects fund cannot pay for those.
Can I ask you?
It cannot pay for those. It doesn't have enough money. It doesn't have enough in that fund to pay for them.
It has the whole general fund supplement.
So the general fund is, we already know that, that the general fund is gonna have to kick in and help cover that.
Okay.
Whether it's a capital project or a stormwater project.
And that's in part what it's for, right?
Yes.
So that's good. We've reserved, that's a good thing.
So you've got general fund allocating in 2029 to capital and you've got allocating with stormwater in 2026?
Immediately into the stormwater fund if you do that pump project, correct?
Right.
Um, and then if you were going to incorporate any of these large projects in the capital projects fund, it's very likely that I'll have to show an infant transfer right away in 2026 from the, um, general fund. So like I, I mentioned a little bit earlier, in the capital projects fund, you have the non-adlorm special assessments for the, um, Bellevue Estates Island for the underground. You have interest income and you have the penny money. That is the revenue that comes into the capital projects fund. So that's why, you know, those revenue sources, they're not enough to pay for these. So that's why we need to tap into the general fund revenues. Um, in 26, excuse me, we're projecting general fund revenues of like 3.3 million dollars.
So if I'm, if I'm reading this right, you're saying expenditures for capital projects would be 1.36 for the year with a revenue of 1.94. So we would have to supplement 300,000 from general to accomplish that expenditure?
Well, in that year, 2026, the revenue would be the 3.57 and the expenditure is 3.61. A lot of what makes up that revenue in 26 is the Gulf Boulevard reimbursement money.
Okay.
Um, so that's why there's such a big dip in the schedule from 26 to 27.
Okay.
Um, and also I wanna mention too, like, our, the, the bulk of our conversations there are these capital projects, but that's not the only thing that goes on in this city. We have regular operating expenditures, we have payroll, we have personnel costs, we have repairs, we have upkeep of the building and the marina and, you know, every, all the other assets that you have. Um, so I, I can understand what you're saying and maybe we can do that at some point to tell you, um, if we were to go down the list of the ranked projects, how fast we would deplete all of your reserves. Um, and unfortunately, like I said, I, I just don't have the time to do that. Get it in front of you and get back the budget for 26 in, in a timely manner.
I, I think that's information we need. I don't understand how we can do that without prioritizing what we have available and looking at what those expenditures would do.
Are you trying to, um, do you have like a minimum you wanna keep in reserves, like spent down to that point and we can figure that out for you?
What, whatever, I think in a professional opinion, a reserve is adequate. I can't determine that.
I mean, everybody is getting closer to their mic.
Sorry.
Yeah, like the, the amount of what each council member is comfortable with, very, um, as far as what we're keeping on the side of reserves?
Sure. But I think it's fair to ask for some professional-based recommendations for what would be adequate and sound practice. You know, we're not all CPAs or accountants here, so that would be helpful. Um, but forgive me, I was off mic before, but I think it's an essential piece of information for us to be able to determine what expenditures can be made in order of priority within the dates that are allocated and the amounts that are allocated and still be within sound funding.
Um, I definitely understand what you're trying to get at and I can appreciate that. Um, so in the capital projects fund in particular, you have debt service that you have to maintain those debt payments. Um, you, we have the ongoing savings plan and a little bit in operating expenses. Um, the amount that I'm projecting for the annual revenue will cover the debt service and the operating expenses. The piece that you can adjust is the capital projects. So for example, like in 26, I'm saying in this, like the, it's the small page where it has the capital fund. So for example, like in twenty-six, I'm saying in this, like it's the small page where it has the capital fund projection. In the capital projects fund by itself, I'm saying that you'll have about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So if that's the number that you're wanting to key off of, that would be, I think, the answer to your question.
Because Gulf Boulevard is already committed and reimbursed from the county, so.
Yeah, so I put the revenue in and then I put the corresponding expenditure in.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I understand the purpose of this meeting, alright? We've been presented with staff ranking of capital projects, general building maintenance and stormwater, things like that. And are we being asked to change the ranking on this? Because we can't just take all this and plug it into what we think the budget should be. That's actually up to you guys. But is that the purpose of this presentation? What is exactly, because I think we're missing some guidance here.
So what we need to know is what projects need to be funded this year for budget? So which projects are we going to plan on spending?
So what are the absolutes?
It's going to be one, not plan, but a thousand.
Right, and so for instance, the Twenty-Second Street Bridge. We don't know if it needs to be replaced or if it needs to be repaired. So that's a huge difference between repair and replace and we don't have that, we don't have the answer. Either way, it sounds like we have to do the bare minimum, which is to repair it. It sounds like this is a, based on what I'm seeing, it's every other year, we have to repair the bridge. The same goes with Harrison Bridge. There's just maintenance and upkeep that goes along with. I see that because it's our only conduit in and out of these two islands. We have no choice. So we just go right on past that and now we look at the causeway light repairs. If you've ever been across that bridge while it's dark, it's pretty scary. You don't want to be on that bridge with no lights. So there again, this is public safety and security. You have to have these things and so there's no getting out of those and those are no brainers. And then you get down to the street resurfacing, well, that's a nice to have. One of my goals whenever I was first elected was to see if we could get every street paved because we're Ballard Beach. But if it turns out that we're okay with what we've got, we can limp along for a little while longer. Maybe it's not as near, it should be at the top of the list like it is right now. Then you've got the citywide seawall replacement. Absolutely, these are things that you can't get out of. They have to be repaired or replaced. Solar testing with citywide streetlights, you know what? We can kick that one down the road and I totally understand why it's a number four right now. Again, it'd be something really nice to have, but it's certainly not something that we have to have right now because we have much more pressing issues that we need to take care of. In the top of the list that is not showing right now, I see stormwater and it's in blue. I guess that's because it's partially funded with the stormwater maintenance fee. But we've got check valves and damaged pipes. These things should be in the top of our list, we shouldn't even think about it. Because these are items that we expect to work. Whenever they're damaged and they're not working properly, no excuse, this city is better than that. As far as the pump project goes, you know, I've kind of been on the fence with it one way or the other. We promised this community that we would do a test on it. I don't know if Ninth Street is the very best. I've been going on what the engineers have said. Mr. Baker seems to think otherwise. Does anyone else think that Ninth Street is the wrong place?
I think Ninth Street has the infrastructure to do the test, but I think Seventh Street is a higher priority.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. And others, does anyone else feel that way?
Anders and Jody have their hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Shirley. You're.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so I'm not going to say that I've been down there as frequently as I should, but I have not seen standing water on Ninth Street. I've made attempts to travel the roads when we had high tide. Clearly, every street's affected with high tide. These are not rain events, they're high tide events that are causing the flooding in the street. And I'm not seeing a lot of water in the street on Ninth. So, I mean, my gut feeling is, you know, maybe that's not the street. I also say I went down many of the other streets at the same time and didn't see any. Even when we had flash flood warnings, I didn't see significant amount of water in the streets. So maybe I'm hitting the wrong time. Clearly, you know, I'm not seeing the need for the pump if we get those check valves in place.
And I would agree with you that, you know, Ninth Street sounded like, I think they're all worthy. They're all worthy because we need to run a pilot on something. We certainly wanted to do something with the worst. Fortunately, we still have other problems that are not repaired that are affecting over half the community and we need to get these things fixed, cleaned up, straightened out. All our check valves working properly, the leaking pipes fixed. I would love to raise them all up, Frank, but I.
I'll just show you a picture of the same tide span. Your sister, don't worry.
Yeah.
Wait, if I could say something here, though. We are now replacing anecdotal information with real facts and real science that our engineers have provided us. We worked over a year on getting a report. We held the report while we asked for more information, more mathematical engineering-related real information and projected it. And now we're replacing that with anecdotal things about what people think they saw.
We asked for it for Ninth Street. We didn't ask for it for Second Street. We didn't ask for it for Seventh Street.
It covered the entire area. Remember, there were.
Okay, alright, one at a time.
There were projections on those reports that covered the entire area and looked at the flood conditions and made hypothetical assumptions based on their mathematical engineering opinions. So I don't think now is the time to replace that with what some people think they saw or didn't see or saw at a particular time and didn't see somewhere else. And I'll raise this just as a point to hold. Because I know there's been discussion about an assessment for Ninth Street. And I am strongly against assessments for any kind of public improvement project within the city because it benefits everyone. And if we want to look at who's benefited, I mean, you look at things like, I mean, as crazy as it sounds, but okay. Well, if people can't get to over the Harrison Avenue Bridge, well, then maybe those people should pay for the bridge. I'm not suggesting that, but the analogy is the same. And we have here a street which at the very beginning of this project, before some of the members that are now with us were not on the panel. We talked about the fact that it is the street that goes to our city park. It is a major street in terms of access to this building and to some of the facilities that are here. And that's in part why it was picked, but it was also supported by an engineering opinion. So that's my view there.
Kim, I'm not here to argue over which street deserves the love, okay? That's not what this is about. I'm all for a pump project and we've done a lot of planning and preparing for the Ninth Street project. However, I would not spend a penny on a pump until the check valves and the pipes are working properly on the rest of the streets. And that's just the way that I feel about it.
And I think that's incredibly important and that, I thought that was supposed to be finished within a couple of weeks. What is the status of that, Kyle?
Actively working on that. I can give you a full update on each valve.
Yeah, I think that's in play.
Yeah. Do you want to go over on that right now?
One second. You took your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you. So Kyle, I know we've talked about this before. I brought it up in meetings around. And my simple question was that if all the check valves were in and working like they're supposed to and we know they can, and any intrusion that's also occurring out there was fixed, which we've kind of just more recently taken a look at those things. If those things are working, just like the mayor said, if they're working, these pictures we're seeing today, would they be there now?
I can't say there would be no water because the rain is eventually going to develop and the pipes will overflow it, but it's going to be a lot better situation.
So it's just a fair statement?
It's starting to work a little bit.
It's just a fair statement that the water we're seeing now that's coming into the street is the salt water that's coming from the Intercoastal Canal because the check valves either aren't there or they're not working properly.
They're not working properly. On the worst example there, you're still getting salt water mixed into that freshwater rain. We've had a lot of rain in the last week too.
Sure, sure. But we know that, that's the way it's supposed to operate. The check valves are working and everything's functioning the way it's supposed to. We know then if the high tide comes up, the valves will close. And if we have a rainstorm like we're seeing this past week, we are going to have some water in the streets because it can't go out of the outfall. But it's typically not going to be significant unless we have, you know, forty days or forty nines or something coming from here, but.
We're almost there, by the way.
Because as soon as the tide goes down and the gate opens, whatever water is in the street is going to go right back out into the Intercoastal. So that's the way it's supposed to work. The purpose, you know, I know we're not going to talk about the pump too much, but the purpose of the pump was for something much larger.
One more second. City Manager Reefer, Anders, you have your hand raised. You're muted.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'm muted. Okay, yeah, so Mayor, as you were going through that list, you were basically retreating exactly what I was thinking. So as you were going down and, you know, you went, my vote is, like you said, one, two, three, items one, two, three, four. And then, you know, I would agree that we also need to put the check valves and the pipe repairs in there. That should be in the list for the twenty-sixth budget. I would like to put the pump project in there as well. I'm open to, you know, relooking at whether we're doing the right street. We should combine the two streets with the pipe and just get them all done because I think we're really close with the price. Anyway, but that's kind of what my opinion was. Hit all these number ones except for really far out ones, I think. I think it's definitely like some of the billy ones, I think we said we really felt we needed to do that one. But anyway, so I was, wanted to just say that I was agreeing with where you were landing there.
Alright, thank you. City Manager Reefer, would you like to give that update? Okay. And then we're going to take a quick break, alright?
Okay, so where on Tuesday last week, you started on Ninth Street and that valve went in that evening. And then we measured the following day and that it was holding back more. It's like I told you, you know, that it was holding back more than it had. And then we did experience the three point three and it did not come out of the drain. But it did fluctuate, so we didn't know that there is.
Such a huge pump.
We weren't using a pump, we were just monitoring the check valve. I think that pumps here represented in the truck where we were doing that anyway. So then on Wednesday, we proceeded to cut the plastic C I P P out of the remainder of the valves. We focused on that and also got in Thirteenth Street that day. And then Thursday, we did more cutting, couldn't get through all of it. And Friday night, they got it in Twelfth Street. So Fourth Street has no valve currently. So starting at Ninth, right now at Ninth, we know it is working to an extent, but I have video of the water making it pass between the pipe and the valves. So we know that there is more sealing that needs to be done to that pipe. It's just a matter of waiting the waters to level up and getting there to seal it. The good news on that is it's a little about a foot higher on the higher side of the pipe. So it won't use as low of a flow of water. That's where the most significant part of the water is coming in. I can't guarantee it's going to seal everything, there could be some infiltration come beneath the water we can't see. But it will definitely improve it by a lot. And then same thing on Twelfth. I feel pretty good about Thirteenth. I haven't videoed either, but I'm certain that there is infiltration there still. And I think it is Twelfth because I think they got it in too late. Were unable to seal well on the bottom on Friday night and that's where it's going to need it. Again, it's just going to need more. When it's dry, I have some different problems I'd like to experiment with, but we're actively monitoring the tide and trying to get it in there and trying to seal it. So that's kind of where we're going with that. We haven't stopped it and, you know, reduced our efforts, we're just trying to get it done. And then if you go, so again, I feel good about Thirteenth. Twelve I think is worth resealing, but I'd still, I'd like before pulling another camera truck, each time it costs us, you know, around five thousand dollars to camera these pipes. I'd like to get some blood out it and see some measurements before I spend it on a camera. But like I said, these are actively getting repaired. Money is being spent on cameras, they're going to call it out. So until we have all these, with Seventh and Eighth, we gotta consider emergency repair because, you know, we're at the point where we're discovering that there are a lot of infiltration coming through the pipes on Eighth Street. And I have Gemini coordinating C I P P liner to make those repairs. But that, you know, it's not really, at this point, for projects, it's going to go along with the list. It's an emergency repair coming out of our operating costs. So in going into the next budget year, we're, you know, where we end up, we could put more money into our five three eight zero six four six zero, which is prepared maintenance and stormwater to anticipate what's coming.
The Seventh and Eighth, the pipe that Mr. Baker is referring to that's too low, where is that pipe located at?
The Seventh Street.
Seventh Street.
So we currently, that's another point. At the same time we had the camera out there, we did verify that the valve that we put in, the short valve, Seventh Street and Manhole is completely sealed, pulled back water. So we did verify that.
Okay, so it is working properly.
You know, all the infiltration on Eighth Street that needs to be repaired.
The problem is with, if it's too low, then unless it's totally empty out there, does the valve ever open? Does it just hold back rain?
It opened at two point eight, it starts streaming.
At two point eight, well, that's not terrible.
No, it's like what we just experienced. We won't hit two point eight in four hours, alright?
So if it's raining hard, your street's going to fill up.
Now, if we happen today, you'll hit two point eight in and out. It's like what's high tide, like three foot or two point nine, something like that. That wasn't very high.
Well, the reason why I'm aware of going with this is, is there a possibility of just replacing that pipe and raising it?
Asking engineer. I believe when they first studied it, they had their reasons. I don't know all the information. I think it was dealing with.
I don't think so. I don't think you can do that. You'd have to, like, someone says the line is way deep, all the way down the road. I think it's, you know, it's a whole full grade get to where it is.
So the full length of the pipe is below that, is very low, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying the pipe, yeah. If you raise it on the outfall there, I think you're just going to attract water into drains.
And is that the lowest pipe in the city?
I have to look, I don't know.
I mean, that is only on, for Seventh, Seventh and Eighth, Seventh and Eighth, they're probably, you know, they're the only two streets together managing that pipe, you know? That's going through that pipe, we're not sharing it. But I guess your question could be broader just to see if there's other problems elsewhere, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, just, you know, just asking questions.
Yeah.
One additional question just to think of, think about, Anders and Kyle, we're looking at those two streets. Is maybe a larger pipe? Maybe we can't do, maybe we can't raise the pipe. But if we get a larger pipe that allows more capacity, well, that solves the issue. Just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can think about it. My gut tells me, though, we got more than enough pipes left to drain. Our problem isn't that we can't drain the water other than that the tide is high and it can't go anywhere. It can flow if it's allowed to, but the water level is just too high.
Which is the whole purpose of the. Which is the whole purpose of the, what we were talking about, the reasoning for the pump. All right, Mr. Reefer, please continue.
Okay, so, I mean, where that puts us though is, you know, we, you know, we still need to do more sealing, specifically on 9th Street and 12th Street, to get those, which were part of the original stormwater project, valves back working in place. For 4th Street, that still has a remainder, jagged piece of PVC lining on the bottom. Wednesday evening, it collapsed about four inches. We were, we burned through like two pneumatic air saws trying to cut through, we couldn't get through it. We came up with the idea after that, for the following day, but it never got long enough, but we were going to, we were going to send that one in, plug the other, put the thing over the sandbag and pump the water out to get in and cut it. But it never, it never got long enough to execute that. So we're planning on, that is our plan when we get to that point. Another option I have for 4th Street is I still have the short, 18 inch valve that was down at 8th Street, or 18th Street, that could go into the inlet at the road at 4th Street to keep that back low. Because I don't know the next time we're going to have water low enough to deal with it. But we're going to keep going at it, but I just can't, certainly we're going to get to it.
All right, thank you very much. Would everyone like a break? I know I would.
We have the firemen here talking.
Well, what I'm going to do is, we're going to take a break, and if everybody's okay with it, we're going to, we're going to halt this discussion, we're going to let Chief Brunt give his presentation, and then we will resume this conversation. Because I think we're in a pretty good position about what's our priorities. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We can hand this back to Heather and Kyle and say, all right.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, these guys, we've tortured these guys for an hour and a half, my house on fire.
I gotta go. All right, 10 minutes. Okay, everyone, welcome back. It's now 7:45, and we're going to take a break from agenda item one.
Thank you.
To move on to agenda item number two, which is to discuss 1001 Cedar Drive presentation. Chief Brunt is here of the Penneleda Sun Coast Fire and Rescue District. Welcome, chief.
Thank you very much. How are you? For having an awesome, a little disagreeing, if I like to say it.
I see that we've got a nice thick book here.
Yeah, I'd like to just say, my, I have my, make some introductions. I have a commissioner, one of our commissioners. Commissioner Gardell?
I'm a...
He's a local resident?
Yes. How you doing?
Thank you.
Commissioner?
And my deputy chief, Chief Best, and he runs the show.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Yeah. So, real quick, on the agenda, I did introductions. So I have a, I have a child with ADD, and I read a book about ADD that was made for parents. And the book had, the first chapter, because ADD is a lot of hereditary, the first chapter of the book says, you can read, the first chapter of the book you don't have to read anymore if you have ADD. And then the rest of it is all the background information. So that's sort of the way I'm going to do my, I'm going to, I'm going to say really, the bottom line of what we're saying here is, if I had a heart attack right now, or someone in this room had a heart attack and had sudden cardiac death, we can't get here in time to effectively save their life. And neither can anyone else. So the fire station over at Bel Air across the bridge, the one up on the end of 144, we can't get here either. There's a hole here in this area. And so, we're your fire district and we want to fix that. And we're going to fix that. And then tonight, we're here to talk to you about a way that you can possibly help us in the meantime, temporarily, by providing an engagement board. So I gave you a little background on us, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating what you guys already know, but we're an independent fire control district. We were established in 1951. We serve four municipalities, a piece of mainland, which is the Bel Air Shore, Bel Air Beach, Indian shores and Indian reservation. Why are we special as a special fire control district? We're a single function governmental entity. So we do one thing, provide fire protections. So thankfully, we're not worried about stormwater or, you know, everything else that you guys in the city have to worry about. We are one function. However, we do have a ward who is much like you all there, community representatives. So we need and I want to try and expose to the system who can possibly do it. I did, I think it really means things. I love working together within the special district. It's the most cost-effective fire protection that you can have. And I'm going to share some numbers on my hand slide with you. But, you know, in this area, this independent fire control district is, we are the most cost-effective solution. We have a local engagement board, like I said. We're your experts. So we are your fire department, so the city itself doesn't have to have its own fire department, which would be much more expensive. And then we're your subject matter experts. So I hope you would think of me as your expert in this area and my staff. We put together, we wanted to compare, and when I say we're the most cost-effective, we're showing your, because we have a non-add-on fee that we charge, and we also charge an add-on tax. Put those two things together, and that's how we get our revenue. They're on your tax bill. But so you can see what the average, how taxable value in Bel Air Beach is, 680,000, how that translates. If it was similar, you'd be paying 418,000 dollars more. If it was larger, across the bridge, it would be about 300 dollars more. If it was clear water, it's another hundred dollars. As your property values go up, the savings...
Excuse me?
Yes?
I'm trying not to interrupt you, but I cannot hear what you're saying. I hear about every other word. Could you please speak into the microphone?
It's weird, that microphone is problematic. For some reason, whenever we're online, you want to loan...
You want to, this one?
You want to just have a seat and use one of these microphones?
Sure.
Or...
Then David, might be just background noise picking up, announcing them or two of me? You know, who needs to be quiet when he's talking?
Well, let's try this right quick. Everybody mute, except for the chief, and let's see what happens.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me know, by the way.
Thank you.
If that doesn't fix it, if I get closer, if that doesn't fix it, let me on, will just say anything?
One second, chief. Joey, if it doesn't sound any better after we're all muted, would you wave your hand at me and then we'll shift gears and give them a different microphone, all right?
Yeah, maybe. I don't know what's happening, but you're breaking up now too. I don't know if there's some interference in the...
Well, I'm going to, we're going to mute them all except for the chiefs, and let's see what happens. I do know that Kyle's moving some things around right now, so, bear with us one second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I caught up the slide.
Is everyone muted? Okay.
Everybody's muted? And how is that? That's one, two, three, four, five? I'm going to catch up the slide.
I don't see her waving her hand.
So she was, I don't hear you see any. So I'm up to the slide on just the different property values, and it's quite dramatic. As property values increase, how old the savings increase. A million dollar house, the savings from, let's say, 770,000. So I just wanted to point that out, that we really take it seriously, these sources of, to your point about Doge and everything else, you know, we're under the same scrutiny. So when we talk about the designing of fire and EMS system, if you look at the next slide, you can see that if we can cover you at one station, we can be about 70% reliable because we're either out on another call, or out for maintenance, or out for training, or something like that. So we try to end up with these overlapping coverage areas to give ourselves reliable coverage at a certain level. So the county says we should be able to be on every call within seven minutes, and that's the gold standard that we're going to look at in a few minutes. But if you're wondering where you fall on this, the 70%, the 90%, the 99%, you're actually on the 0%. The 0% you have covered within the established minimum times. So we want to fix that. So our goal, sorry, I'm making a little adjustment here to my screen. So our goal here is to improve the survivability in Bel Air Beach for cardiac events, strokes, sepsis, things that time is of the essence, respiratory failure like heart failure, asthma, CVP. Those are things we've got to get here really fast. And we want to put ride and fires and time to say, pull somebody out of the fire that could still be sick. And so, and then there's some side benefits too. If we improve your fire coverage, it also lowers insurance rates. And we want to continue to be the most cost-effective approach. So we don't want to add a bunch of cost to the system as a whole. There we go. So the next slide is just a fire. It just shows you that within about four minutes, the entire room or the entire structure is on fire, once the fire starts free burning. So this is why that seven minute mark, we assume we're going to catch a fire when it's smoldering and get it before it's, it's like that first picture where the trash can is. But you can see how fast, what I'm always amazed at is, people are like, well, there's not that much to burn here. But what happens with fire, you can put a garbage can in the corner of a concrete room, and eventually you'll have fire across the whole roof of the room because smoke is an incomplete product of combustion, and smoke burns. So that's what you see on the far right there is the smoke's on fire. And so once that happens, it's called flashover, and nothing can survive in that room. On the medical side, this is a great chart, shows cardiac survivability. If we can be there when somebody's heart stops, we have about 100% almost chance of saving them. If it's five minutes, it's 50%. If it's 10 minutes, it's 0 to 10%. So almost impossible. We did have two cardiac arrests in Bel Air last year, in Bel Air Beach, and both of them had response times greater than ten minutes. So to give you an idea on that chart.
And what were the results?
We transported them to the hospital. I don't know their outcome.
So I'm just going from any rocks, the stormy to the Bel Air Beach, you told me about last year?
Right, two, four cardiac arrests.
All right, since we're all on mute, whenever someone asks a question, just repeat it.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, those were calls from any, where we responded from any rocks. It's the same if the one, the clear water station responds over by, over by the harbor. So time is of the essence in cardiac, also in stroke, also in sepsis, there's many other factors that make this seven minutes. We have some limitations on the barrier island, where our cover, coverage is strained because we have the price of real estate and, you know, just the fact that we're long and narrow. We, we have this, we're talking about today, a sort of community perception of, we have a fire station close enough to serve us. When, it really boils down to how long it takes for that fire station to get to you. So the next slide, which is the 2025, this is a, the one on the left is a computer analysis showing response times. And the, and I have to apologize, the legends are different on each one I'm going to go through, but this is showing our likelihood of being there in seven minutes, or seven minutes and 45 seconds down to the one on the left. And you can see, you know, and no time is the coverage green today in the current model. And you can see the fingers in some areas down the streets where it's red. There's no way to meet the response time. How that translates into reality is if you look at the map on the right, on the page, if you look up at the screen, if you're wondering where I am, because I didn't know the pages, but it's 2025. Those are actual calls, and whether those calls met the response time or not. And you can see on the right hand side, you know, none of them in this area meet the response times. So the next slide is the current, and it's a satellite map. What that, really all I want you to focus on is the circles going up the beach. You can see how when I talk about building a system, you had circle on top of circle, you know, down in St. Heath Beach. They're a little more spread out as you're going up the island. But you can see that hole right in Bel Air Beach, where not the fire station from mainland, not the one from what's called 44, which is the clear water fire department, nor our 27, can sort of cover this area.
Let's try the other mic.
Okay.
You want to try it? I don't know how much cord.
Make sure you turn that other one off.
I turned it off.
Do you want to roll this one? Yeah, I can do that.
Oh, my God. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. We, we're fire, we're fire, we're in order and then that. I have my deputy going to like advance the slides for me. Thank you. So I just wanted to show the coverage of the beach and then the hole in the middle. This isn't, so the next slide is 2009. This isn't a new problem. In 2009, this is a county map, and if you look at coverage of the beach, it's all green except for, of course, Bel Air Beach. So it's been decades. So here's our, we're going to solve it this year, it's my commitment. So this is option one, which is you, what we're going to ask of you, and that's a temporary solution with coverage from here, from the House on Cedar, and temporarily basing a fire truck in your parking lot. So that, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that's when we talk about basing a fire truck temporarily in Bel Air Beach, that's what I'm talking about. And you can see the coverage on the map on the left, you can see all the way to the right, the coverage of that map, the dots on the map, you can see that it's a much better solution where we can get to that 70% of response reliability. Our option two is our permanent solution, which is we bought property, we're going to build a fire station on, at the Church of the Isles church. And so that's our long-term solution, but we won't get that station done for probably three years. And then we have approached EMS about, so we're your fire experts and we can fix the fire problem, we're empowered to do that. EMS needs to help us fix the EMS problem. So, and they have said, we met with them and told them our plan, and they said they're willing to step up and fund positions to fix the problem after the station's completely constructed and we've moved in. So they're not, they have, currently have a policy against helping a staff temporary stations. So that will be another ask is how, because you have a lot of weight with the county and the fire, the fire district, I don't have as much weight. So you may petition them in some form and say, hey, we'd like you to help fix this EMS problem since the fire's fixing the fire problem. So 2028, you can see, that's when we've got EMS in fire, we built our station in the north, and we've fixed our problem, you know, in the long term. So what we're asking for, and what we're here to talk about tonight, is allow the district to operate out of the House on Cedar by parking the fire truck in the parking lot of this building so we have no access and no use of Cedar itself. Because there was a concern with some of the residents that we'd be bringing the fire truck down the street, that kind of thing. That potentially we'd even be allowed to build, we can park that out of covering for the fire truck. It's going to be long-term. Long-term, I mean, three years. And then again, we would like to talk at some point about getting your help and petitioning the county to help us with some EMS funding so that we can put a paramedic on that truck to fix the EMS problem. That'll make sense.
All right, thank you, chief. I appreciate the presentation. Counsel, we've all, I'm sure we've all heard from someone that lives around here concerning this subject, who would like to start? Any questions or comments? Yes, Kim?
What happened to...
Kim, turn your microphone and put it on your face, please.
At some point, there was some consideration of buying property on Cedar. What happened with that?
Well, I think I got a little ahead of, over my skis, I call it. So I thought, you know, if we were able to operate effectively out of the, I think I was just carrying the idea too far forward and being too creative for my own good, and that's what caused the opposition. I imagined if we were able to operate out of the Cedar house, and then I had talked to Kyle, and he had said, well, that house has some function as a store room, or, you know? And so I thought, well, we could buy the lot on Cedar and for the city use, you know, and to build a workshop or whatever they need to do in exchange for us getting the house. The house is in the position we need to be close to the parking lot, but, you know, in my mind, I thought, well, maybe this could work into a long-term solution rather than just a short-term solution. And that's what got the, I think, some of the residents thrilled up because... And, and that's what got the, I think, some of the residents enthralled up because thinking I was going to build a fire station maybe on those two blocks or whatever.
Well, I, I appreciate the creative thinking there. With regard to the EMS then, you're saying that that would not move into this temporary situation currently, and you're asking for our support to ask for a variant, a variance of the policy. So could you tell me again what that policy is?
So, Anels County has an amazing system. We have an overarching EMS authority which is funded by the law and tax. And it pays for the ambulance service and also funds each fire department to put paramedics onto fire trucks or ambulances, like, or they look like ambulances, we call them rescues, but, or quick response units. But basically to put paramedic level people onto the trucks. So if we moved a truck up here, we would need additional funding for additional paramedic positions ideally. We've told the county, you know, it may be possible for us to, to front it if they're, you know, they'll come into us. But really, we would need them to fund, they've already bought us a rescue, so we already actually have the vehicle to sort of backfill our operation with. And what we would like for them to do is fund a H L S person, so a paramedic level person to be on the fire truck. Otherwise, technically, it would be a V L S, so a basic life support person, so an E M T, a less high, it's very cost prohibitive nowadays, and you can't find care then. So, you know, to help us fund the paramedic position would be great. Benefited in, quite frankly, it's, under my charter, you know, I'm the fire person, and under their charter, they're the EMS person. So they really should, if they want to, and we've told them, we'll radically collaborate with you, whatever you want us to do. But we really think the EMS problem should be fixed with a temporary station. So far, when we met with them, they said, we don't staff temporary stations. And I think the fear is, well, if it's temporary, maybe then it goes away and you guys will still want the funding or something like that. I do think that they've made exceptions over the years with that, and I think that with your lobbying of the county EMS system and the mayor is on the EMS advisory board, you know, so he knows how this all works, I think we could actually get those positions allocated from the county. The county has a very strong EMS system, it's strong funding, hundred, over a hundred million reserves in the reserve fund. So I think, quite frankly, I think it's, it's been a problem for a long time. We have, we all have the opportunity to fix it, and we all should come together and fix it, and we'd like you to invite that to the table.
A lot of communities have medical professionals, because I, I don't know the difference between an EMS and a paramed, but on fire trucks as a matter of routine, don't they?
Well, in Anels County, most fire trucks have physicians funded by the EMS authority. So yes. And if they don't, then they're considered a basic life supporter. So they'll still be able to respond, do CPR, so it does actually improve survivability. It's just not the same as having somebody who's got that advanced level that can give drugs, to defibrillate, and do other advanced things.
And the chief is right. They may say they have some guidelines that they follow, but historically, they've made exceptions for friendlies. So I think that if the opportunity presented itself that I could bring several layers with me, and we would all be given the opportunity to speak in front of that council on our behalf, on your behalf, to ask for additional personnel. I, I know we've gotten close before, but we didn't have the groundwork to actually make that happen. We didn't have a place to keep that person.
Right. The county wanted us to build it first, right? And originally, we thought the temporary would satisfy them, and now we've learned that it doesn't quite so. We have to go back to the table, but you're right. We've, we've been working on this for a long time. They, they definitely weren't comfortable until we bought property and we, you know, we could show that we have skin in the game. But now it's probably time to go back, and it will be incredibly helpful to have the cities behind it.
Now, before I go to other council members, would you briefly tell us exactly what it is you're asking for out of the building and out of the parking lot? How many vehicles will be there? How many people will be there? What hours they'll be operating? What does it sound like whenever there are calls? These are things that really no one's been told yet.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. So, and we do operate out of, on the mainland in a residential neighborhood, and it's amazing how quiet the trucks are. They don't go out blaring their sirens and everything else. So it's pretty, you know, I don't think it's noise prohibitive for them to come and go. Like I said, they don't hit their siren unless they really have to. So this would probably have a call a day, like one every 24-hour period, maybe a call or two. We envision, and it's all, it's a collaboration, but we envision parking for, in the row of, the fire truck, in the row of spaces that's against the house, like where the house is. And so they can pull in, pull into that space, and then pull right back out. They're doing a circle. And at any given time, we would have at the most four people there, so there'd be four cars. The shift change, there may be eight, but that's it. Seven in the morning, there may be eight for a short period of time. But during the day, we'd have four cars there. And then what we need is basically a three-bedroom house. We need a sleep room for each person. We need, so I guess that would be a four-bedroom, but we could put two beds in the room, a bathroom, shower, kitchen. We usually use, you know, we try to commercialize the kitchen as much as we can.
You're going to have to continue, we're going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
I have a hard time hearing, but, okay, so four cars?
Four cars.
And where are they parking at?
I would, and they're, well, that's a great question. Like, we could park in the community center parking lot in that same area, quite briefly, as long as the citizens, I would, I just don't want to say anything that's going to, you know, to affect the folks that live on Cedar. But, you know, certainly, cars could also park in the driveway at Cedar, like, or the personnel cars.
Okay. And so, fire truck is leaving the community center parking lot, and wherever it comes back, it's, it's entering, how's it getting back in there?
Just the same, just the entrance to the community center parking lot.
Okay. So at no time, you're driving down this next street?
No, just coming in the parking lot immediately, turning right. I mean, we can work together on our club. What I've envisioned is we pull in, turn right, and we go to the far side of the parking lot around, and we park as close as we can to that row of trees so that when the fire and, as close as they can be to the fire truck when they get called. And then when they pull out, they just pull out to the, sort of the main drive that comes into the back parking lot. They just pull out and in and out through the parking lot for this building, the entrance for this building. No, there's no reason for us to even put a foot on Cedar, not even a pedestrian foot. But, I mean, if, if, for some reason, we, we decided, oh, they could park a couple of personal cars there, you know, because it would relieve parking places in your lot, you know, certain, and they wouldn't object, certainly that would be something to think about.
Okay. And just to continue, giving everybody as much information as we can possibly give them. Obviously, the city has set aside some money for, for making repairs to the building. I believe that was from insurance. But there's additional, there's additional items that need to be added to make it habitable. So is the, the district actually providing any funds to assist with that?
Yes, we would expect to pay any funds that wouldn't be your typical, this is what we talked about. So if you were going to, if you were going to rehab the building, but my understanding was, for example, you wouldn't put a shower or a bath necessarily in there. We need a shower, so we'd pay for that. But basically, we'd be willing to pay whatever share you felt like we needed to pay for to make it fair.
Okay. And then about the noise, you said the engines are relatively quiet now compared to what they used to be. What, so you have a five alarm fire, and this truck is called, what, what does that sound like for our residents?
Yeah, so, like I said, they are going to pull out onto the main drive here. They, they will, they'll have their lights on, they may, they may hit their siren if there's traffic.
There's going to be traffic.
Yeah. So four in the morning, they're not, three in the morning, they're not going to, but in the middle of the day, their siren will come on while they pull out, and then they'll go north or south, just like today on Gulf Drive, they come up Gulf Drive, right? So not much different than, than what it is today, except for pulling out of this location and making it to Gulf Drive.
Okay. Three years is a long time, and I know that at all the other fire stations or where there's fire trucks coasting, there's usually a caution light and it switches gears whenever an alarm goes off. Is that something in your plans for here, or is it just leave it as it is?
It's a great question. We hadn't, I hadn't considered it because I thought this is a state highway, and it would probably take longer than the three years to get the traffic light in. But certainly, if we could get a traffic light in, or even the, you know, electronically-controlled, like those crossing lights, you know, just warning lights, we'd totally be willing to explore that.
Well, the reason why I bring all this up is because, I don't know if you've seen our beautiful sign out there? It's, we keep it blue for a reason. It was almost impossible to get that sign because the neighbors, they did not want that. And so, I, I do fear that you're going to run up against the same mentality that we don't want this in our neighborhood. And so, I, I just wanted to.
Let you know.
Sure. Of what, what it's like in this area. They're all great people. They all, you know, they, they all have their own ideas as to what their neighborhood should look and sound like and, and so on. And I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to let the rest of the council start asking questions. I just wanted to give as much information out prior.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, I take. So right now, if a fire, if a fire truck is serving a fire, that's, let's say, you've come across the bridge, and you're going to take a right and go that direction towards Clearwater, it's still in Bel Air Beach. Where would, would a truck actually come from that direction to serve a fire, like down on Morgan Street?
Yes. So we operate, in Anels County, it's amazing, so we have eighteen, nineteen different fire departments. We operate as one, one set of policies, procedures. So a standard response to a smoking ability, three engines, two trucks, which are the trucks with the ladders on top of them, rescue, two district chiefs. So that's a normal response. We have, and in the county, the closest goes for everything.
Okay. So my point is that, Mr. Baker, I mean, it could be at three in the morning, there's a fire down by Morgan Street. You're in Bel Air Beach. They could be coming across that bridge anyway.
Right.
With the lights blaring and hoars blaring at three in the morning.
Right, and they usually say you'll have a largo.
So that could happen. So if we don't have any control, it may not be any different if it's pulling out of the parking lot here and taking a left to go to the intersection. I'm just saying that, that could happen. So the, the crew is asleep in, in the house over here on Cedar, and a call comes in on television. You see the alarms going off, the guys coming down holes and all that kind of stuff. So is there a big alarm that would go off on Cedar? Or how are they notified that they need to get up and go take care of a fire?
I love the, I love the question because, so in the old days, they had these big bells, like you see in the movies, right? But we found that that was killing the fireman, like the stress of.
Right.
Down to sleep and waking up. So now we have a kinder, gentler way, which is good for the neighborhood too. Like, there, no, there's no loud bells. There's a little, in our station, there's a soft chime, and now we're working on actually bed shakers.
Okay.
And the firemen wear vibrating watches. And so, it actually is less, you know, noise.
So that would be an issue to a neighbor's house?
It would, hearing the alarm go off or something like that. Yeah, great question.
That's good. So the, the crew would get up then and get prepared and leave the house, and then just scoot over here and jump on the truck?
Right. I imagine a little set of stairs there, you know, by the wall.
Right.
And just right up into the truck and.
Okay. And what time typically are the shift changes? What time of day?
We change shift at 7:00 a.m. And that's it. They work 24-hour shifts.
Okay.
So only 7:00 a.m.
So what time would the new crew come in?
Probably six thirty.
About six?
Yeah, six thirty.
Okay. So six, at six thirty, there's a potential of four personal vehicles pulling in, which may not be unusual. I mean, a lot of people get up here, I mean, I get up at five and go to work, but I don't really, so that, that could happen in any street. People could be coming home from work at six in the morning. So I don't think that's a big deal then. Okay. Thank you.
You've got great work here at six o'clock.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Baker.
That response rate you were saying, 10 minutes, is really highly unacceptable. I mean, I think our average age is like 53 years old here or something, it's in the 50s.
Further up than that? Fifty-six.
I keep getting older.
Yeah, so do I.
I, I really can't, I mean, as long as you don't turn the lights on till you hit the street and the siren, like the Vice Mayor said, you're going to have largo and the mayor says coming over anyway, they're not, they're not making us any consideration. I'm a hundred percent.
I think the other thing that I would comment on here is that the, you were talking about the citizens and their response to the blue sign. I think the argument here is what is the response time? The response time is the result, and that's the benefit to the, to the residents, not the noise. And the noise will be kept to a minimum, so I'm 100% for the project. As long as everybody is addressed and everybody's satisfied, then I think that, I think the response time is far more important than just a little bit of noise.
I've not heard anything from Councilmember Wellings or Shirley. Who would like to go first?
I guess I could, I'll speak to you too. Actually, you know, I'm, I'm not really in favor of this. I guess I'm, I understand it's a trade-off between response time, and I think the residents on Cedar, you know, there's going to be a perceived loss in property value. I think having something like, even perceived, even if the fire agents are behind it, you know, in the parking lot behind it, I, I just don't see those residents supporting this. So yeah, so I'm not probably in favor of this.
All right, Councilmember Shirley.
I'll just say, you know, the city has been operating out of that house for many, many years. This is, this is a very similar operation. I, I'm sure probably it was given to us how many calls are made in Bel Air Beach. I couldn't hear, but I did hear that there's probably one in a 24-hour period. So that's 365 people in our city that might have a medical need. And it makes their chances of survival much greater. And that's important to have that fast response time. I would definitely be in support of it. It doesn't change the use of the house as much as one living.
Thank you very much. So recap, I think we have one person who is against and everyone else is for.
I have not. Just a question, haven't you had a study done where property values went down because you're here? I would think the property values are either up.
That's a great.
Or go up.
It's a great question. Two things I thought while you, while you were making your comments. One is, calls are very predictable by time of day, and they're, they're busy in the daytime and slow at night, so it's about eight, and maybe eight to eight is, so, you know, the fear of, we could be going out all night long. But the other one is, there is a study that shows property values actually go up if there's a fire station in close proximity. The house right next door to the fire station, you know, may not see that, but the house, houses within close proximity of a fire station, the research shows that property values go up because people want to, like, like you said, aging population, like, you know, some people look at that, you know, want to have access to emergency care.
In some cases, their homeowner's insurance goes down.
Right, right. Well, that's the thing about the fire side is the insurance, the I S O rating. If we can improve on our I S O rating, that's what sets your insurance rate for fire. And you don't, you don't get the highest rating because of the distance here.
Well, I will say that I am for this also. However, I still think that we need to have an open forum one night and let the community come up here and let us know.
Yep.
All right. And.
That, that's the next step, right? Is that the residents do get a chance to force their opinion? That would be the next step?
Yep, absolutely. So, City Mayor Sirree Clark, if you don't mind, would you just, or Captain, would you coordinate one night, six o'clock, everybody's here, well, not everybody, I'd say, well, yeah, it's public. yeah, it's a public meeting, so yeah, have the whole council here and, and let's, you and I will get together and we'll discuss how we're going to handle, uh, community response and, um, and how it's there, okay? Uh, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Does that sound fair enough?
Sounds great. Any feedback on, on our presentation, on how, you know, the best way to shape it?
Probably not a bad idea for you to be here, actually. David, how does that sound?
That sounds great, I appreciate the support.
Okay, all right, great. All right, so I, I don't know what our schedules are all like, but I would say within the next two months, I know it's hard to get everybody on the same page, but if we can just reach a core, I think that that's been, uh, uh, Councilmember Shirley and Wellings, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I see a thumbs up. All right, what I'm hoping is that the outcome is, uh, positive and that we can get this done. And then the next step is to, uh, to go and meet with the EMS advisory people and see if we can persuade, you know, I don't, I can't guarantee that's gonna happen because they have not been very generous with Anellsunco's Fire and Rescue District as they have with others, but who knows, maybe they'll have a change of heart. I certainly like your approach and I think that it's, it's working out well for this community. Yes, Karen?
I just wanted to say that my house is located across the fence at the very end of Cedar, so I'm on Ninth Street. I hear more noise from pickleball in the middle of the night with that clunk, clunk, which is, you know, it's fine, I'm glad people are out having a good time, it, it doesn't bother me, but I fully support this, I think it's a creative, good idea, there's a medical need, um, and if you need any support, Mr. Mayor, in promoting that to the county, I'd be happy to participate, so.
Great, great. All right, well, if there's no other questions, I believe we've, we've released voice our opinions, and now we've got a plan. Within the next two months, we will have that meeting, hopefully it's sooner than later, and, and we'll see where it is from there. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate everyone else, your cheerleaders that you brought with you.
I didn't introduce my boss, which is here also, my wife is Alice, she can't, my commissioner, my deputy, my boss.
Very good.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry to add to the length, I know you're being long.
Scott?
Sorry for so long to get you up.
Oh, no.
You know what, if, if I'd thought about it, I would have asked to reverse it, but it just didn't seem, uh, I, I just ran with it, I'll give it.
We, we do budget meetings too, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you for being here, and I appreciate you explaining everything to the council.
I liked your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
The deck was good.
All right, let's get back on to item number one, and, uh, I think where we were at last was, was that we, we had pretty much decided that we know what the basic core functionality for the city, the, the main things that we cannot overlook. High priority, everything else is, takes the back burner to safety and security for the city. And, uh, I don't know if we had any other comments that anyone wanted to make, other than I was just going to ask the Heather and the City Manager to go back and look and, and take all this into consideration. Uh, Mr. Harper?
I just had a question on item one and item four, to go with the replacement versus the, replacement versus the repair, and in particular, the last column, which was the life cycle of seventy-five years versus two years.
So I put two because every two years-
I understand, I'm just simply saying, would it be better from a budgeting perspective to budget on the high number for replacements since it is such a much better return on investment of seventy-five years versus having to have an annual repair every two years, especially when you're talking about a hundred and twenty-six thousand versus five hundred thousand? I know they're ballpark numbers, but it just seems like you budget for the worst case and hopefully it comes in and it only needs a repair, but that's the money surplus.
Wonderful idea, yes, I agree.
That's the way I would look at it.
I was gonna propose that, yes, like the mayor said, you've all kind of agreed on the fact that the Twenty-Second Street Bridge is a priority, so I'm, I'm gonna propose that I include that for five hundred thousand between whether it's a repair busily or if it's more of a replacement type project. Would that be okay in the capital projects fund?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the causeway lights, that's more of, I think, when they break, we fix them, kind of a, a, for thirty thousand. Does everybody okay if I put thirty thousand in the budget for that?
What is the average annual?
It's a lot lower than I should be, I would say five thousand.
I was thinking that was very high. Do you state there's a chicken, any money in that? No, it's a state, you can take here one half and, uh-
Is that why we have different style lights on the bridge? Get to the halfway point of the bridge and the lights change styles?
They lost all their lights.
Yeah.
I thought that was a little counter. Uh, Councilmember Shirley?
I'm sorry, I just, it's kind of off subject, but it was when we first started this conversation. You know, we're pretty far, I just wanted to just kind of recap something. We were handed budget schedules in March, on March twentieth, um, and we are just addressing this today. And I just wanna say, in the future, can we get some of these projections and some of this information more in advance so we're not having a, you know, three-hour meeting about items that we need to budget last minute? Uh, this is, we should have had some of these projections, and I'd like to see more of like the burn rate, if we do all these things, how quickly we burn through our reserves, things like that, like we've done in the past. I think it just makes it more helpful, especially for those who haven't been through the budget cycle yet, you know, this is, uh, there's a lot of information to absorb, and now we're gonna have to, I think we'll have another meeting early September, and we have to lock in a budget, and we're kind of just seeing these numbers now. So just, uh, you know, in the future, you just need to be a little more up to date on what's happening and having, uh, this information more readily available.
I appreciate those comments coming, for Shirley. I actually, uh, thought that this was in response to what we've been hearing with the property tax, because we are so far into the budget, I, I didn't, I, I just assumed that's why we were, why we were having this discussion.
I know I asked for some of it, Dave, because it seemed like the last meeting we had, that many council members weren't aware of what we had in the reserves and what was, what our-
Priorities, yeah, I understand. All right, well, thank you for that.
Okay, so we've got the bridge, the causeway lights, and did you say you wanted me to decrease that amount, or?
Uh, City Manager Reifert, what's, what, how many, ten thousand per year, or ten thousand per year?
The remaining items in the capital project fund are just the annual savings. Um, you know, those range anywhere between five thousand dollars, we put away seventy-five thousand for street resurfacing, it's the highest line item, but those are just the annual savings. Is that fine to keep it that way? Okay, so that, I believe that would be the only change to the capital project fund is the increase in the bridge repairs, to, to show that we're using the prior year reserves in the current year budget. And the general fund, the same thing, it's pretty much true, just the annual savings, those range between three thousand and about eight thousand, with the exception of twenty-four thousand being, um, reported for buoys, replacement. Is that fine? The buoys was the, the priority item, is that fine?
Council? Oh, some of the buoys?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And you're October first installed?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Shirley, we're in laughter, November thirtieth, though.
And then the big, the big thing that we've been talking about tonight is the stormwater projects. Um, I proposed, just for the time being, that we, we can budget stormwater improvements, they're, they're gonna be undefined at this point in time. If you don't wanna say that it's for the Ninth Street pump project, you know-
Did you say, did you say underfunded?
undefined, undefined project, yeah.
Bucket, bucket of money.
Yeah, you're gonna have to do some stormwater improvements, I don't need to know exactly what that looks like tonight.
So you're talking about eight and nine?
Yeah.
Those two.
Yeah.
I think that's a good result.
Yeah, just for the record, I, I am, uh, I'm still for the pump project, but this council and the city is going to have to make a decision on which way they wanna do it. I don't want to, uh, we can go one way or the other and it's a mistake. I think if we make a mistake on the pump, uh, we're, we all have to accept responsibility for it, but I-
So why can't we just leave it in there? And we don't use it, we don't use it.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, just not, not tag it as the Ninth Street Pump Project, we'll just say stormwater improvements if that's okay with everybody.
That would be six, seven, eight, nine, whatever it needs to be. All right.
Top one?
What about? So you really is talking about the six hundred and sixty thousand?
Yeah, we have-
Twenty-six.
Six hundred and sixty thousand and then fifty thousand in the valley curve.
Okay, even though that's in two thousand twenty-eight?
Well, we had that in the first draft of the budget anyway, that's, that's essentially the annual savings of that project.
Okay.
I'm curious, it's coming out of the general fund, um, what's not being spent on the general fund for these projects? So we have money in the general fund and it's not allocated to anything?
Um, that's true, we have unassigned fund now, too.
All right.
Okay, well, I'm happy with that.
For the li-hem, I talk about five, three, eight, zero, four, six, zero, which, where you don't have a budget in front of you, that is, uh, storm drain repairs and other maintenance. Last budget, this current budget, you're gonna be at fifty thousand, and now I reduced it, um, but I recommend, I produced the five, I reckon we'll put it back up to fifty thousand for what we're dealing with on some of the-
For repairs, not necessarily flush.
Yeah.
We've got to get this, we have to get all of these drains repaired.
Is that where the, the lining would be, kind of, you put that in the same budget there?
It could follow, it could be lining, it could be a valve, um, for, for specific valve, it could be anything, just to improve the storm progress.
Okay, okay. There we go.
Okay, well, I've got a plan and you'll have a budget. You have a, um, public hearing next Wednesday? That's an important one, is everybody gonna be around?
Next Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Next Wednesday? I didn't know we'd set a date.
He said hey.
He said yes.
So Wednesday the third?
The third, yes.
Okay.
It's six o'clock, I'll do it then, it's five oh five on Monday.
So you're gonna see the budget this, this way that we just discussed tonight, um, you're gonna have the first reading, reading of the resolutions that establish of the budget, and then Melodra, and then-
What day is this?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the-
Third.
Third, okay, I, I heard thirty-first.
Oh, no.
Thursday first, is the council, who is it, Thursday? All right, yep, I'm good with that?
All right. If I might comment, I think this is a really good accommodation in terms of the stormwater project, and if we can come up with a solution that affects more streets, wonderful. Um, I only ask that we all keep this as a priority for next year and move with all due haste in terms of finding our solution, because a lot of people are really upset, and they feel like we're going through paralysis by analysis, and so the more that we can resolve that, I think we'll have a lot happier populace.
And I will, uh, respond to that. I'm hearing more complaints from people that have their check valves, that they're, they're either not working, they're missing, there's a problem. So it's a, it's a much wider spread problem right now for our community, and I think it's, that is our number one priority.
Agreed.
I'm not forgetting about the box.
No, no, and I, I agree, and I think, I think our manager's gonna have that, the check valves resolved fairly soon, so that's good, I know it's moving forward.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other comments on this? Heather, you have your marching orders?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, do we have any general business, or is everybody ready to go home?
I have just one question.
Okay.
What is the status of the easements issue, or issue of the easements being removed?
Well, I'll tell you, the, the question, my last comment I provided was to the reporter was collecting information for their articles, that the city was, um, believed that the easement was still in effect. That's the last that I provided that article up to them.
Is it?
Yeah, and they, uh, if you recall, there was a, you know, sent out a citywide email about our start date, well, they found some sea turtles, and they're not hatched yet, and so now they're going down to Indian Shores, and they're starting there. Uh, so, uh, they'll eventually come back, but, uh, my, my hope is, is that they're able to complete this project before spring break, that's what I'm really hoping for. So, uh, any other general business?
Should we have some birthday prep, should we all go out on the beach and have a birthday celebration for these turtles when they come out?
I keep on eating.
Don't go out on that night, because they are locking the gates, okay? Here they are. You know, we all thought they were not locking the gates, so I went down to the beach at ten thirty the other night, and three nights later, they're locked. So don't go down at night looking for turtles. When you go down to Twenty-Eighth Street.
If we do a picture with the red light, blue light, some other color light.
I think between them.
All right, well, this meeting is adjourned.
Cool.
Thank you.